And Pastor Baggett, let you lead us off in a word of prayer, please. Right there, the center podium, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I want to first thank you for your grace and your mercy and your forgiveness that you so freely and abundantly expressed toward our lives through our Lord Jesus Christ. We are grateful and we're humbled for your faithfulness toward us. We pray that you bless and you guide the leadership of our city. May they have divine discernment as they navigate the issues that face this community. We also pray for the police department and the fire department and the first responders as they go out every day to serve Gullisville and its residents. We ask that your protection rests with them and that your guardian angels stand beside them every day. We pray that God, through our Lord Jesus Christ, always be the God of our city and that your presence always guide and protect those who serve us in the capacities that you have allowed them to. We offer this prayer today in the name of our Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor, for your time. Appreciate it. All right. At this time, would everybody join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Madam Recorder, would you please call Roe?
Mayor Tenen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Gilmore.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Recorder. Commissioners, before you, you have the reading of the February 13th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Board of Commissioners. By the recorder for approval or correction. Is there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minister approved as written with a five-zero vote. At this time, we're going to open up the podium for citizen comments. And whatever your item may be, please state your name, your address, and hold your comments to three minutes. And we have a timer here on the wall.
We did. There we go.
Mr. Ellis?
My name is Scott Horton, 528 Natalie Drive in Gullisville. I've been here for 26 years. I'm here to speak against the hobby chicken thing. I thought we'd killed the chickens once before, but apparently not. I'd have a hard time getting through this at three minutes. I'd be grateful if you'd consider a little extra time for it, but I'll do my best. Reasons not to adopt this ordinance remain. I moved here from the country in a farm environment. I moved here because I didn't want to live in the country and I didn't want to smell chickens. I smelled them where I was at. I came here to the city where I wouldn't smell chickens and have livestock near my house. I have a list of reasons to cover, but I think one of the big ones is I venture that every subdivision built after 1985 in Gullisville has restrictive covenants assigned to it. And I'd be willing to bet big money that every one of them says no livestock, no poultry. And mine does. The subdivision adjoining mine do. I have copies of both of them here. They explicitly say that no animals, livestock, or poultry of any kind shall be raised, bred, or kept on any lot, with the exceptions for dogs and cats. Both documents also say no detached buildings, so that's a different possible point. My experience, most homeowners don't even know what restrictive covenants are, much less that they have on their house. It's basically a rulebook that comes with your lot. If the commission approves this ordinance, you're opening a can of worms for all the owners in these subdivisions that have these restrictive covenants, especially those without an HOA like mine. Unknowing homeowners will take this vote as a permission slip to have chickens on their property when in actuality, most of their covenants will prevent it in their specific subdivision. For those like myself who are against the chickens, I'll have to lawyer up to undo this mess and fight for the covenant restrictions relief. All I can do, and of course, try to get those legal costs back. Those restrictions are there for a reason and very common. The reason, of course, is that suburban subdivisions don't want livestock or chickens, nor did our small city prior to this meeting. At the very least, please require permits and include this as a permit requirement that no restricted covenant exists that precludes poultry on the property should you choose to vote for this thing. Chickens are not quiet. Anybody who's grown up on a farm, you'll discover, anyone who's not grown up on a farm, you'll discover that chickens make lots of sounds and not just roosters. They're very vocal when laying eggs. You can see research for yourself. This usually happens just before dawn. Hens with reproductive failures will crow. And of course, somebody's going to get a rooster and keep it until you make them get rid of it. Chickens poop. You can look it up. One chicken produces about 10 pounds of manure a month. Three are going to produce 10 pounds a week and 40 pounds a month. Chickens stink. Even the R-40 zone setback proposed in this is not enough, in my opinion. The R-15 in ordinance, which I understand is a third of an acre or more, only has 15 feet from the property line as a requirement. Is that my timer? Please let me go more. That's important. We need to put this to rest.
We'll give you about another minute.
I'm standing more than 20 feet from you right now. If I bring in a bucket full of chicken poop, you're going to smell it. If I make it here from now on like it's going to be in my backyard, you're really going to smell it. Chicken coops attract flies. You want flies in your backyard, big fat farm flies, get some chickens. Chickens introduce environmental issues. I have a drainage ditch in my house. Every time it rains, all the chicken poop's going to run to my yard or your yard. We may have good owners, but we've got plenty that don't. We've got chickens right now on Loretta Drive, lots of them at somebody's house. They're not being enforced. You know, codes is not doing it now. What makes me think codes is going to do it later? They don't have, I presume they don't have the manpower to do it unless you're going to add manpower to, or chicken police. This is an unnecessary enforcement nightmare for the city. I guarantee you, people like me are going to make a stink with every infraction that there is with these chickens. Regarding the sightlines in the ordinance, not being able to see them from the street helps who? Not me. I don't care about the tradesmen driving down my street, looking at my house. I care about what's in my backyard, where I've got to live and enjoy my property.
Thank you, sir. I'm sure we have more people wanting to speak. For the people that are coming in late, this is a citizen comments. If you're coming to speak on any item, hold your comments to three minutes. Give us your name and address, please, as you make your way to the podium.
I'll just continue. I'm Kathy Horton. I've been here 26 years as well. Three chickens will lay at most three eggs a day. It's a lot of mess and trouble to get that few eggs, minus the expenses. I don't think people realize how expensive it is to have chickens. Healthy coops can't be placed just anywhere. They have specific requirements. The UT Ag Center produces a lengthy document on this. With those in met, you'll have unhealthy diseased birds. And who's going to document and enforce that? Who's going to enforce the proper building of the coops? There's nothing in this ordinance to prevent a homeowner from erecting a soon-to-be-rested tin shack or one made from three pieces of plywood. They could be ugly garbage piles with piles of chicken poop on top of them. And I don't want one upstream from me in sight, and I'm sure you don't either. There's also electrical concerns. They run wires. They have to have electricity. So where are the wires going to go? Through trees or are they going to bury them? Or does that go through codes? Do they have to have a permit? There could be fire hazards from that. Who's going to inspect them? I really don't want to look at that. If the majority of you do not agree when you go to vote, please consider that all installations must go through an approval process, just like a new home. Get a building permit, have formal plans that are carefully evaluated and field-measured, plans to include lot drawings and measurements. All installations have documented evidence that there is no existing restrictive covenants for the property that preclude poultry farms and animals. All coops must meet some minimal design criteria and quality of construction, criteria against a quality standard both for the birds and for the aesthetics. This would include proper design per UT Ag documentation, painting, or the same exterior treatment restrictions as their home, et cetera. It can't just be a four-sided wooden box or a tin roof. It can't be dilapidated and ugly. Change the minimum chicken enclosure setback from any structure 180 feet for all zones, not just Ag and R-40. Implement an ongoing inspection process. No chickens without permits. Permit must be renewed and re-verified periodically, one year minimum. And if they must do it, make them work for it. Make them pay for it and be responsible for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Horton.
My name is Christie Gregory. I'm at 514 Elba Drive, and obviously, I am here for the chickens. Not really sure that I agree with everything they say. They have their opinion, and I will have mine.
Could you speak in the microphones so everybody can hear you? Sorry.
Gallatin, Hendersonville, all the surrounding cities, you have permits that you can get for your coop. You get fees that you pay to have for your hens. They have to be in your backyard. They need to be fenced in. They need to be hardwired in your coop. You are responsible for your chickens. Most cities that touch us and anywhere near us allow you to have three to six hens. I can promise you, three to six hens, it's going to take you a while to smell them. If you do, that's if you are a poor pet owner. No different than if you're going to smell cat poop or dog poop or anything else that's outside. You have to clean up and you have to be a responsible pet owner. To me, a chicken, even though it is a farm animal, is still a pet. So... I'm for the permits. I'm for the coming out and inspecting. I don't really, I don't know. It's a matter of opinion on what is up to standards on people's appearances. I could think one thing. You could think something different. It's all about how you take care of what you have and your responsibility. Not your neighbor's responsibility, not the person down the road. It's your responsibility of what you do. It's not an easy task. It's not something you take on. Anybody that knows anything about chickens knows that raising even just three chickens is not going to save you on the price of eggs that you can go to the store today. They are recreational. They are an emotional support animal. They can be registered. I'll just stop there.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to come to the podium on any item on the agenda tonight? Seeing no one make their way to the podium, we will close this portion of the public hearing. And at this time, we're going to move on to city manager comments. Mr. Ellis?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I just have really three announcements tonight. One is this coming week, we will be having the Heritage Day program at Massacre Station. That is April the 15th, 16th, and 17th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. On April the 26th, from 8:00 to 3:00, it's cleanup day here in Gullisville. It's free drop-off at the drop-off yard at Public Works for bulk items and any other rubbish that you may have at your home. And then on May the 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., it is a free shredding day, also at Public Works. So anyone has anything they need shredded, bring that day. And that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. At this time, we're going to move on to commissioner comments or questions.
I have one comment, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to thank our police department, fire department, Public Works Department, Parks and Rec Department, our customer service teams. We have had a week of incredibly severe weather. And I know a lot of people, myself included, get very anxious, get very stressful. Growing up in this area, it's just a part of this time of year. And I think all the departments, everyone did a fantastic job with road closures and flooding and debris in parks and all the stuff that goes along with severe weather. So just wanted to commend everyone for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Any other comments? All right. Hearing none, we're going to move on to unfinished business. Mr. Ellis, would you consider ordinance 25-1105, please?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance of the City of Gullisville, Tennessee, amending the fiscal year 2024/2025 budget passed by ordinance 241087. Mr. Mayor, this is second reading. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Ordinance passes with a five-zero vote. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1106, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance 251106, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Gullisville adopted per ordinance 15851 by changing the zoning on the back portion of property at 528 Moncrief Avenue from R-25 low-density residential to agricultural. Second reading, and this requires a public hearing. Staff recommends approval. Planning Commission adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to open up the podium for a public hearing. Would anybody want to speak on this item? Seeing no one make their way to the podium, we'll close the portion of the public hearing, move on to a vote or any other discussion. Hearing none, we'll move on to the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passes with a five-zero vote. Moving on to new business. Mr. Ellis, would you consider ordinance 25-1107, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance 251107 is an ordinance to amend Title VII, Chapter 1 and 2 as it relates to fire protection. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this aligns our Appendix D of our fire apparatus access roads. It actually reduces the width of the road from 26 feet to 24 feet. This is for us to better mirror and align with the fire department roadway design standards and match that in which Metro Nashville Fire Department requires. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 251107.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Ordinance passes with a five-zero vote. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1108, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance 251108 is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Gullisville adopted per ordinance 15851 by changing the zoning on 2.39 acres of property at Zero Hardaway Drive from R-25 low-density residential to MDRPUD, medium-density residential plan unit development, and preliminary master plan approval for six residential dwelling units. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this is on first reading. Planning Commission has approved. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do we have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. I'm coming on this one. Just wanted to disclose for the record, I do own a property on the adjacent cobblestone subdivision. And I spoke to Mr. Ellis and Mr. Freeman about any potential conflicts. And while I do not believe there to be a direct conflict for me, I will abstain from this vote. So I just want to have that noted.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye. All opposed?
No.
Was that three ayes and one no?
Three ayes and one no?
What was Cisco?
Okay. All right. Passes with a three-zero vote. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1109, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance 251109 is an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to provide restrictions for hobby chickens and domestic hens as defined in residential zoning districts. This is reconsideration, first reading. Commissioner Walker has asked for this to be placed on the agenda. I will say that if it should pass first reading, I will be bringing back various amendments to this in regards to permits, in regards to, I'm not going to call them design standards, but a lot of standards that would be required. Just wanted to see how tonight went before we went down that path. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner Walker.
Do we need to motion to have it heard first?
Can discuss it when we get on the table?
Okay. I'm welcome. I spoke to Mr. Ellis about bringing this up. I heard from a number of community members that wanted to have it reheard again, especially considering the last time it was heard, it was a different makeup of this body. And so I know it's come up a number of times in the past. And so I think we owe it to the community to at least address it here. And then however it goes, we'll at least know how this body feels about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. All right. Do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion on this item?
I'd comment as well, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to hear Mr. Ellis was going to bring some amendments. I was going to discuss that tonight. I think a permitting option is going to be the most fair way. I've heard from people on both sides of this, so it's a tough position to be in. And I'm all about striking a balance into what's fair. And so if there is a permitting option that would put us in line with other neighboring communities, I was looking at the language in Gallatin. I think it was around a $50 permit annually for chickens. And so I would be in support of a permitting option. So I would love to see what those look like at the next reading if it went forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Any more comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, so, and maybe Commissioner Walker knows this, so the adjoining cities that people... that people...[1312.82]